Please welcome to the City Marine City Virtual City Commission Meeting is now called to order on Thursday, May 6, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, when I call your name, if you could identify the city and the county that you are located in. Commissioner Bryson.
I'm here in the City Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here in Marine City in St. Clair County.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here in the City of Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here in Marine City, City of St. Clair.
Commissioner Kreidler.
I'm here in the City Marine City and County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Ross.
Here at my home in the City of Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Mayor Verkaman.
I'm here in the City of Marine City and the County of St. Clair.
City Manager Levin.
Here, City of Marine City, St. Clair County.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the agenda. We're going to remove 7B Boy, so 7B Boy as amended.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Callahan, support.
We have a motion of support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to public comment, anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. Commissioners will not respond, but we'll follow up as necessary. All right, moving on to approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of April 15, 2021. Any discussion changes?
This is Jake. I'll make a motion that we approve the City Commission meeting minutes from April 15, 2021.
Ryan Ross, support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I need a motion to approve the City Commission Budget Workshop Minutes of April 19, 2021. Any discussion changes?
Just one comment. This is Commissioner Hendrick. I just noticed I spent a lot of time asking a lot of questions and a lot of that was just not put in there.
Okay, I need a motion.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve the City Commission Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes, April 19, 2021.
Support, Phil Clausen.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the consent agenda. We've got A Planning Commission Annual Report, moving on to C, the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of November 9, 2020, Pension Board Meeting Minutes of January 26, 2021, Community Economic Development Board Meeting Minutes of March 24, 2021, St. Clair County EDA, Special Events Splash Bash, Business License for Tractor Supply, and Business License for Crazy Cousin Cupcakes. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Jake.
Support, Jake.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to financial business. I need a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, for $351,013.20.
This is Commissioner Callahan. I make a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, for $351,013.20.
Support, Phil Clausen.
And we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Up, wait, wait, one question.
Questions? I'm sorry, questions?
Elaine, the very last page, I see we got another bill for Wade Trim for the Brickyard condo. Can you still tell me where that's going to be located? Is that between the Degurcy and?
Yes, the Northell River. It's in that area.
But you can't give me a definite location?
We have plans in the office.
Well, yeah, but the office has been closed.
Not to Commissioners.
We've let people in that have anything that needs to be conducted in person. Just need to know.
All right, I just figured it should be simple to just give me a location, that's
So I need a motion to approve expenditures.
We have the motion already in a second.
We had a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we got the preliminary financial statements. I need a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements. If not, I need a motion.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We receive and file the preliminary financial statements.
Support, Callahan.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross. Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now it's time for our public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission will conduct a public hearing at 7:09 PM to receive public comments on the proposed 2021-22 budget. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Anybody out there want us to speak about the proposed budget? Okay, no comments, so the public hearing is closed at 7:10 PM. And we're moving on to unfinished business. The Utility Bill Defernment, which is Resolution Number 004-2020. Elaine?
Well, this was first brought to you nearly a year ago, and what we're looking for now is a determination if you want to continue moving forward with this, or if you want to go back to normal business and have the late fees resume in June, or some type of combination thereof. You're provided with those four different options.
Didn't we talk about other communities having this deferment, and everybody's pretty much that we looked at as going back to normal and waiving, not waiving fees anymore, right?
There's a mix. Clay Township has been, or started adding them in May. East China's adding late fees. Algenack and St. Clair are still waiving and not shutting off.
Yeah, I'm thinking that with the amount of government help that everyone's getting, that we should have no problem going back to resuming our late fee schedule. Anyone else have any thoughts about this?
This is Jake. I have to agree. I mean, I think we're at a point now where we need to start turning on the late fees and the shut offs. We need to start looking at bringing in the revenue that's been outstanding.
Do we, do we, Commissioner Callahan, do we know where we're at, you know, and how far in debt we are with the late fees right now?
I know that we just rolled over the past due amounts onto the tax bills. A lot of, Michelle spent a lot of time calling landlords and utility customers to get them in to pay the bill, and many of them have caught up, but the ones that haven't, traditionally every year we roll them over onto their tax bill, and that list has gone to the treasurer to send it to the county. So we're starting over fresh right now.
Can I ask you, are a lot of these people, the same people that would have done this prior to the pandemic, prior to us, you know, doing this?
That's what I've been told.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I know that Algenack and St. Clair have both stated that they're very interested to see what kind of action that we will take tonight, because I think they're looking forward to possibly making a change as well.
This is Commissioner Hendrick. How many people are we talking? Do you have a count?
I don't have a count. Megan, do you have that list available that Michelle would have sent you?
Good evening. I do have a list. It's broken down by section, so I'd have to add them all. You guys are actually going to get the full list at the next meeting before I roll them onto the taxes. Obviously, we have to do our special assessment resolution. I'd say currently, there's probably about, looking through the sheets right now, there's probably about, there's about 28 accounts that appear, sir.
That's for the whole?
What was that?
Is that for the whole town?
That are delinquent enough to be put on the tax bills, approximately. I'm just looking, again, I looked at this for about 10 seconds. It looks to be about that much.
I just wanted a rough estimate. That's not very many, so, okay.
No.
Our utility bill and clerk said that daily people are coming in and making restitution to bring themselves current, so they are moving towards that, and we're happy with the outcome with only that number.
Another quick thing to add on this real quick is that the moratorium has expired, and also, even though I'm going to bring these accounts to you as a commission in the next meeting, as long as they come in and pay basically by the end of the month, even if you approve it to go on their tax bill, we won't put it on there if they pay up to even that last minute.
Yeah, and I think that the people that, probably not all of them, but the majority of them were late prior to the moratorium, so I think it's time that we resume the late fees and shut offs in June. Can I have a motion, please?
This is Jake. I'll make a motion that we resume charging late fees and doing shut offs starting in June for delinquent water or utility bill payments.
Support, Phil Clausen.
I have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
I just wanted to ask the attorney before I do the roll call, because this is a resolution that ends at the end of May, is a motion necessary?
Well, you could, really what you're doing is you're just not reauthorizing that. So the motion could be just changed to say, in a friendly way, just a motion to not reauthorize.
Okay.
Right? Because it's, my record right here says it's expiring anyways.
Right.
Right.
So Jake, would you be acceptable to that, not authorizing the resolution?
Yes, so I'll amend my motion to not reauthorize Resolution Number 004-2020.
Thank you.
Jacob, you took that as a friendly amendment, right?
I did.
Okay.
Is that you, Bill, supporting?
Yes.
And I still need a roll call vote.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to 10B City Manager Review, Resolution Number 002-2021. Elaine?
This is a process that we have been working on for a couple of months now to do a new process for the evaluation and putting forth goals and objectives through the process of a resolution. I provided a resolution of some goals and objectives for this calendar year that I thought were really smart goals and things that are achievable. One thing that I just wanted to talk about is that we are now almost five months in, or just the beginning of five months into this, so there's still about eight months left on this. Obviously, looking at it, there are a couple things that are being really finished up as far as some of the goals, so working with the contractors in 260 South Parker, we've got about two months left of that that obviously is taking up some of my discretionary time. Facilitating coverage for the Treasurers Department during her leave, that is something that I have been working on, and we have someone that will be in place on the 17th. Also, the pension investigation, that's something that had been worked on with the attorney. So the list that was compiled from the items that I received from Commissioners was provided to you, I think, over a week ago. So the list contains 24 items, so what I guess we will be looking to do is prioritize those and see if there are any of those that we will be able to add for the goals and objectives
Well, I was happy with the evaluation, goals and objectives that you set out. We received the list from the other Commissioners, and some of these aren't goals and objectives, in my opinion. You can clearly see who has management experience. And, I mean, we talked about our goals and objectives being attainable and in a timely fashion, and I don't understand how some of these are like that, but, so I'm personally happy with the ones that the City Manager provided. And we can, I mean, feel free to add a couple on there. We can't, I mean, 24 seems to be off a lot.
This is Commissioner Hendrick, since nobody's going to talk here. I created items 7 through 24. I don't know where the other ones came from. I'm assuming other people, because I feel that there's a lot of things here that really do need to get done. We do need a complete set, number 14, get a complete set of policies from the PD. This has been going on for as long as I've been on the board. We have never, ever approved it, and that's serious issues, and I realize they have the insurance company looking at them, but they've looked at them several times. That's a big issue, because that can be a liability issue. I think updating the Police Department Body Camera Policy, that's, again, never come to the board. That's another one that could be a serious liability issue, so I think that's a big deal. Reviewing computer history, that's something we asked for in the policies. I haven't really been able to find that being put in there.
Can I have a question about that? When you ask for computer history, can you define that a little bit more?
What it is, is you have, all your computers within the city here have history, and a report can be pulled out, and it should be monitored, and that was something that was brought up when we talked about the policies and procedures within the staff. So you always want to make sure that everybody's using your computers in a proper manner, and that's what that's for. And all companies do that.
I know, isn't that done already by the City Manager? I mean, if someone's looking at a site, isn't the?
I have no idea. He manages it.
Isn't that flagged up somehow if you're looking at something that you shouldn't be looking at?
So through our IT company, they already have something in place that blocks sites that you really shouldn't be going to. We do have, of course, the Police Department that has certain sites that they need to be able to go to, so doing a computer search really is not going to paint any type of picture or tell me much of anything that's going on. People are allowed discretionary use to jump into their email, or jump onto their bank occasionally, as long as that isn't abused. I have not seen any signs of that. People are constantly walking around the office. You see what people are doing on the computer. I have not gotten any information from our IT company about any sites that people have been going to that are inappropriate.
Well, Jim, how's up? Are you on? Are you on today?
Yeah, I'm here. Madam Mayor, I'm here.
Okay, I just, you're the Chief of Police. I just want to hear your response to the, to the two things that were just brought up. I just am curious.
Well, the Lexipol, excuse me, our policies, we went to the company Lexipol, that is monitored and maintained by a group, a large group of attorneys. Anytime there's a change in the law, whether it's federal or state or court cases, change the law, we get updates via the system. I review them and then implement them. So, I mean, I understand that it's been done in the past. I tried finding it in our charter, where the Commissioners should have approval on those. I can't find that anywhere, so if it's out there, I apologize, but I was not able to find that. And my, I guess my question back to the Commissioners is if there's a policy in there that you don't like, and you don't agree to it, what am I supposed to do at that point? My hands then become handcuffed, and that creates a bigger liability than anything. I'm trusting the attorneys that are setting these policies in place, therefore, that's why I went to this company, and so far, everything's working.
Right.
In regards, in regards to the Body Camera Policy, again, promulgated by a bunch of attorneys, I don't see where the liability comes into. I don't even understand how that's an issue. It's been approved by them and put into place by me.
Because didn't we get that when we purchased the body cams?
No.
No, completely separate items.
Okay.
All right, let me respond to that. In our charter, it says that the City Commission is responsible for all policies and procedures, period. That doesn't mean just the city stuff, that means everything. You know, we've been through this, Jim, even when Tillery was there. I asked for this back then. Our city attorney at the time, a different city attorney, said that, yes, it should come before us. Whether we can change anything or not, that's irrelevant, but it still is part of the process that it has to be approved by this board. So we've been round and round on this several times, and I know at one time, we were given, or I got a copy of it, and I was able to go through it, and then I was told that it was three years old and it was out of date, and then it was going to be updated again. And I mean, these things, regardless of that you have all these people doing it, it's still a part of this board, that this board is still supposed to approve it, and Mr. Downey at the time still said, regardless of whether we show everything or not, that there was a way to bring it there to make sure that they do get approved by this board, because that's what we're supposed to do. The Body Camera one, I've had people contact me, and I've even had other police departments or police officers. There's an issue in there where it says the officer can turn this thing on and off, I've read it, turn it on and off at the discretion, which, to me, that can be, that can be an issue. So I still like our city, wait, wait, I'd still like our city attorney to take a look at that and see if he feels that there's no issues there, but these things are things that have to be taken care of.
Hey, Lisa, it's Elaine. Can I ask a question? So I also took a look at the ordinances, trying to find specifically where it sells out, the policies have to be approved by City Commission, and I was not able to find anything. We can just clear this up and get it before City Commission for approval, if you can just provide me that information about where that is.
Ask you this, how come we have to prove all the other policies and procedures except for the PDs? Think about it. It's right in the charter. I don't know how you couldn't find it. I've read it a million times.
If you could just guide me to it, that would be perfect, and we can nip this in the bud.
Well, I guess these are some of the issues that I've seen over years of being on here, or even attending meetings, that a lot of these things should be done. I mean, you know, this is part of.
If they're required to be done, I agree.
This is, most of the things that I've provided are things that a city, a normal city manager does on a regular basis within a city. That's the way I look at it.
Well, the city manager just made, the city manager, excuse me, the city manager just made a request, let's nip it in the bud, let's get it done, and then we can move on, okay?
Yeah, I just, Bob Davis here, I want to chime in for a minute and echo something that our police chief said. You know, there's a, there's a uniformity quest going on among, among all law enforcement to try to standardize how police officers are operating on common ground, and there is this, there is this, Jim, I don't know if it's just a bunch of lawyers, but there's a whole handful of them, for sure, and they're tracking the case law, the decisions made by the Michigan Supreme Court and the Court of Appeals, interpreting police conduct and other things, and they're issuing, you know, policy changes down to the police departments. I, you know, we can bring, and it's not, it won't be a problem, we can bring these to the Commission as they arrive. I'm just probably, I'm telling you right now, I'm probably never going to be in a position where I'm going to support rejecting some of these implemented policies, but that's probably a different issue than you just seeing them, so I don't have any problem with that. But Jim, I don't think you ever reject them, do you? I don't think you call these people back and say, hey, I don't. I don't think you call these people back and say, hey, I don't like that one.
Well, I, through, through the process, once I get an update, I review the update, I can either reject it or accept it. And I, I would be a fool to reject it because it's an update provided by a company that we're paying thousands of dollars to. So I would be a fool to reject it. I, I pretty, I review it, and I accept it. It goes in our policy, and then it goes out to the guys for acknowledgement.
I guess you're kinda missing the point. I'm not disputing all that. All I'm saying is that eventually, we still have an obligation to approve it.
So do you, do you think, Lisa, that it would be wise if we, you know, like, um, like, just had a, a, an agenda item twice a year where, where the commissioners, um, get an update on, uh, the, the police, uh, policies?
Yeah, it's kinda like all the other ones we do. We have to do the ones for the roads. We have to do the ones for our own policies and procedures for the regular workers. It's the same all the way around, and Jim Downey, who reviewed this the first time that it was asked for, said that it wasn't a big deal, that, that we have an insurance company that reviews it, make sure it's okay, but then it still has to come before the board. He agreed, and be approved. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Why don't we just, instead of bringing every one, you know, at heart?
Yeah, you bring it in at one document, he said. You can just present one document, and we can, that, that's all I'm saying. I think people are taking this way out of context of what I'm asking for.
Well, no, so why don't we just, why don't we just, why don't we just then establish a process where, you know, twice a year, Jim brings the updates, uh, before the commission, and they get acknowledged and received and filed?
Hey, Bob. Bob, it's Elaine.
Hi Elaine.
I, I don't want to do anything that is not necessary. If it's necessary, I don't have a problem doing it. I would just like to know where in our ordinance is it says that all policies have to be approved for commission?
Well, my, my comments were premised on that being provided.
Ah, there we go. Bingo, bango.
Hey, it's Jake. I, I have two quick things. The, the first one is I, I agree that we need to figure out if this is truly is a requirement, or is it, is it not, you know, by our charter. The second is if it is indeed a requirement to review these things. Bob, I don't know if this can be done in closed session or not, but some of these policies and procedures have no business being in the public domain. For instance, if you have to break off a police, and I'm just hypothetically, you have to break off a police chief once it hits eighty miles an hour. If I'm a bad guy, now I know if I hit eighty miles an hour, the police are gonna disappear. So, some of this needs to be thought out before it just gets distributed willy-nilly to the public also.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
That's exactly, I, our prior attorney said that we bring it before in a document form, just like Bob said, and we just approve it. So you understand what I'm saying? I'm not saying we're gonna review and reject and decide what goes in it. I'm just saying they have, still have to be approved by us.
But, but my question back, Lisa, what, what if it gets to the board and the board doesn't approve it? Then, then what am I supposed to do at that point? Cause we're paying thousands of dollars for this company that knows.
Well, I can't, why the board wouldn't approve it. I'm just saying that it was a requirement. And, and you know, you, Jim Downey, like I said, he looked at this before and agreed that all it takes is a document, single page, that says we're gonna approve your stuff. I mean, I think you guys are all making more out of this than you should be.
Mr. Bryson, I gotta, just to add to what you said, one of the reasons we went to Lexi Poll is, is it had the ability to separate policy from procedure. So I'm, I'm safe when it comes to that. I will release the policies to the board. If it's in the charter and the board wants to see them, would gladly do it. I, I have nothing to hide. These policies are top-notch, they're up to date. I love the system. A little expensive, but I love what it, what it hails. I will bring it to the board if the charter so, says so.
And Chief, that, I just want, you know, I, I wholeheartedly, heartily agree with you. I just wanna make sure that if we ask for something, we don't put something in the public domain that shouldn't be.
Yep, I, I agree. I would, I would not allow that to happen.
I think every board member can, uh, can agree to that, cause we certainly, um, love and support our police department. Okay. So where are we? Um.
Uh, we were, we were just went off on that issue. We were still talking about the, um, the city manager resolution, I think.
Ah, that's right. I forgot where I was. Um. Okay, so, uh, we, we still have discussion about the city manager review. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Kreidler. Uh, since I'm responsible for, uh, uh, section one through six on that second page, I just wanted to let you know that those are my goals and objectives, kinda long-range hopes and dreams, as we talked about a couple meetings before. And, uh, I'd hope that some of them get looked at, but I, you know, I'm not looking for a comprehensive, uh, making this as a comprehensive list of, of duties for Elaine to process in the, in the next, uh, seven months, whatever.
Well, we, we did talk about a road diet for South Parker. In fact, John, that was something that you and I talked about as well, so. Um, I think that that's, that's out there. Um, whether I wanna put it in a, in, in her evaluation, um, you know, I'm not sure right now, because there's a lot of other things that are, um, pending. I think we gotta get, um, through the summer and all those things that we've got going on. Um, anyway, but we're certainly, you know, listening to everybody here. Um, does anybody have anything else?
I have one question, Bill Foster. I guess around twenty-one about city managers getting out with the public. Is, uh, the league, uh, getting used to the Lions Club, or the Delivery Club, or the Tom, you know, one of the clubs in town, and get more involved in the city, the people in the city?
Do other city managers or city supervisors do that? Cause I haven't seen anybody at different, at different, uh, things that I've done too.
Maybe.
Our prior city manager did.
It doesn't mean anything.
Some city managers do get involved. Um, one thing that's very unusual here is that, um, most city managers don't attend every single lower board, which that's something that has been, I guess, historically done here. Um, I would be willing to trade attendance at some of those lower boards and take away some of that time that obviously takes me away from my family at night to, um, participate or join either, you know, Rotary, Lions, something like that.
There you go.
So what are we really gonna do with all this? I guess that's my question. I mean, I don't, I don't see like number eighteen, get more training for the people running our boards and how to operate. I don't think that's, uh, ridiculous, uh, or, uh, something that couldn't be done. Cause our boards do need some training. They're, they're struggling.
Well, one of the things that we.
Well, we do, we, we do, we do, um, we do do, uh, ZBA training annually or twice a year, if necessary. Um, we, and, and I think your ZBA does a pretty good job at that training, and they do a pretty good job overall. I mean, I, I think what you're, that, when I read that one, I, I, I think I was hearing that, um, the suggestion was about, you know, making sure they're running a good meeting parliamentary-wise and, you know, structurally. Um, that's always an issue for, for the sub-boards and, uh, the folks, um. But there are materials we could distribute to those boards about running meetings that's available, and we could just, you know, we could make sure they get that stuff.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about, because we've had people, I mean, some of them have commented to me, they don't always understand. I know you give the training to the ZBA, but a lot of the other boards don't have it. They don't even know what rules we use to, um, effectively run the meetings. I mean, there was an issue, one meeting came up where somebody was saying we follow Robert's rules, which we don't. So all I'm saying is that, you know, we have all these nice people that volunteer for these boards, but we need to give them enough support and direction so that they can effectively run these meetings and understand some of the rules when it comes to running the meeting. So I didn't think that was a big deal, and that's something that should be done. I guess my next question is, since it's obvious that this is gonna go nowhere, when we finally finish this tonight, we need a document on how we're going to rate this when it comes down to it. And what I don't wanna do is wait till we get to the last minute for her evaluation, and we have nothing set up. So I know this has been a time-consuming thing, but this is our first time through this particular process, and I think it's important, but I think we need to start working on that phase next, if we're gonna just leave what we have in here, in here, which I, I think is not a whole lot, but whatever.
Anyone else? So going down the list of, uh, one through twenty-four, um, does the board, do we feel like we should grab a couple of these and, um, bring them up front to the, um, actual evaluation process? Um, I think eighteen is a good one, we, about the training and at least providing some, um, some training, uh, material to our, to our board, um, our sub-board members, and, uh, or subcommittee members, I should say, and, um, um.
I think number twenty is another one that should be done. I mean, that's right in the rules too. I mean, for, for, for our employees, the, it's easier for them also to have things written down. I know when I got evaluations through my company, um, my boss had to write up all sorts of stuff, and then I had to, um, write things back, and we went back and forth. But that's how you know how your boss is feeling about your performance, and, and if there's things you can do to improve. But if it's just discussion, I mean, anybody can do that, but I, I think, um, we should be doing better evaluations so that, that the employees have a better understanding of what the city expects.
I think you can accomplish, um, uh, this goal with department manager meetings, which Elaine has, uh, open communication. Um, you get the same evaluations. I'm telling you, there's, I don't see too many good evaluations out there. I haven't in my entire career, so. Um, Wendy, what do you think about that?
GM's done them for years, and they're, they have a very good process. It's very simple. Three times a year, they start out, they do a mid-year, and you do an end-year review, and then you start all over. I don't see that there's.
Yeah, and I can tell you, it's about every department manager that has to do those evaluations. It's a, it's a dreaded, it's a dreaded time. Uh, Wendy, Commissioner Callahan, what do you think about all this? Not to push you on the buck.
No, I mean, you know, I, I think if there's some kind of evaluation for our, for our employees, or if there's some kind of, um, conversation, I guess I should, that, that Elaine, we know Elaine has with them. I wish would, there could be some way that that could be shared with us, because I think some of the things that we get, some of the complaints that we get, you know, which, you know, whether we believe them or not, you know, about like the customer service in City Hall, or whatever, you know, we could know that it's being addressed. Um, I don't necessarily know, believe that we have to do a formal evaluation on every one of them. No, I don't. I don't.
No.
This is Bill Foster.
But I would like to know, I would, I would like to know, huh, whether it's, if an informal kind of conversation, or a, I should say, a more of a formal conversation that is had, I wish we could get a summary of those conversations.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I, I do think, as city commissioners, we should be able to have that information.
Yeah, that would be something that, um, I'm not sure how to deal with that from an HR perspective, because you're talking about, um, discussing employees, and I, I don't think that that's something that would be allowed in open session, and the employee would have to be a party to the conversation as well. It's a little bit different when you're in the public realm instead of a private business, where, like a GM, it's just you and your boss and the, the management. It's not something that's FOIA'd or out in the world for public discussion.
Yes, but unfortunately, in the, in the, um, government world, a person's personnel file is public record.
Yeah, but, but under the Open Meetings Act, when you are going to have a meeting that discusses the performance of an employee, the employee has to be notified, and the employee
Yes.
has the right to demand that it be in closed session.
But I think all she was asking for was the information, not necessarily discussing in a public meeting.
I think, um, you know, and, and I can tell you all that I've, you know, I've had many times where Elaine contacts me with issues that are happening, and we walk through solutions, uh, very carefully, and we don't violate anybody's rights, and we manage issues, I think, very, very well, uh, that are happening in the office. So, I mean, your city manager is your, is, is the head of all, she, she's the boss of all department heads. And so, um, you know, I, I think she does have, I think what Wendy's saying does happen. I would have to look Wendy on how we can communicate, um, that type of information to the commission at large without running afoul of, of all the, um, public, uh, employee, um, issues. But let, I, I, I understand what, what Wendy is saying. Um, I think that Elaine does, you know, conduct department head meetings, and I think when she conducts those, she does raise issues that are going on in that department, because a lot of times she'll call me about those issues in advance. Um, yeah, so you know what, Wendy, you're right. A lot of those, a lot of those conversations don't make their way to you. Um, and maybe there, maybe there's a way we can figure out on how to do that.
This Bill Foster in the building. I, I worked for the, I worked for the city for years, uh, coming up there, and, uh, I, I can go get my file out, and I can get the evaluations out of my file, because they all did it when I worked there. So it's more that if they have a problem, the city manager can take it to the board, uh, and, and with the employee, and discuss it in, in, in private, in closed session or open session, whatever you think. The employee may want it in open session, so that's their call. But there is evaluations. I had to do them.
Anyone else?
How about number fifteen? I mean, we've been waiting on this for a long time, and I thought you were fairly close, weren't you, Elaine?
I have still been waiting on Justin with the county, and unfortunately, have not gotten anywhere with getting the updated emergency management plan from the county.
Yeah, when you're relying on someone else to, uh, get you information that you need, especially if it's on your evaluation, that becomes an issue.
Aren't you the head of the emergency committee? At the county?
I, I'm not the head, no. I, I just chair the meetings for the.
Well, you're there. But I mean, we need to have something, and I think we agreed once before in committee that we weren't gonna wait for them. If we didn't have to, we were gonna try to get something put together. I mean, let's not wait till we have an emergency to, you know, these are the types of things that think are normal activities.
The county is a pretty integral part of an emergency management plan.
That may be true, then, then maybe get with all the other city managers and put pressure on the county to get the job done.
Anyone else?
And this is Jake.
We did, we did have that emergency already, uh, that one time, and we had to get a, uh, a school opened. We looked for places, and there's a certain time that's black and between, when the county can get there, and somebody has to take care of it now. And that's what, that's what we were doing before. We took care of it before, got the people food, got a place to sleep. We had this lined up. Thank you.
You're absolutely correct, Bill, and that's what started this whole thing, trying to get us an emergency plan. But how many years has that been since that happened? But how many years has that been since that happened?
A while.
Anyone else?
Uh, this is Jake. Um, one thing I would like us to consider to put in there to tackle over the next seven months is item twelve with an emphasis on getting our rental inspection program by, back up and running. I, I think that's a really important thing that has kind of fallen off the list or fall off the radar a little bit.
Yeah, we were talking about that. Um, I had a meeting with, um, Elaine and, and we were talking about, um, getting, um, the rental inspection program up and running and that's something that, um, is on our radar for sure. Anyone else?
So, what are we doing with this?
Well, I'm waiting for everyone else to have input and if there is no input, uh, we need to, um, discuss adding, I was gonna add, um, how about if we did twelve, fifteen, and eighteen? Elaine, how do you feel about that?
Uh, it might be achievable. I think there's probably gonna be a little bit of assistance that I'll need that could be budgetary issues.
Right. How about if we take twelve off the board for right now? Cause I mean, or, um, or fifteen off the board, so we just do, add two more? Is that more attainable?
Well, what's the issue, Elaine?
Time.
Well... That's why I had, uh, let's see, where's the one in here?
Elaine, what do you think about adding the, the two?
I think that's manageable.
There you go. All right, it's a start. So, um, I need a motion then to, uh, approve the resolution number zero, zero, two, two, zero, two, one with the addition of, um, fifteen and eighteen? Suggestions fifteen and eighteen?
Thought you were doing twelve and eighteen.
I think twelve is probably more pressing.
Yeah, I agree. I think twelve is definitely more pressing.
Okay, twelve and eighteen, sorry.
This is Jake, so moved.
Support.
I have a motion and support, um, so we're gonna, so Bob, how do I, um, word this then? We're gonna do a motion to approve the city manager review resolution number zero, zero, two, two, zero, two, one with the addition of, can I just say twelve and eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. I need a roll, we have a motion and a support roll call vote, please.
Wait, wait, wait. Wait. So, I'm gonna ask the question again. Bob, how do we put together the next phase of this?
Well, you know, we can, we, let's talk about that for a minute. So, the point, the point of this process and, and it, i- is, is, is not to turn the relationship between the city manager and the commission into a box-checking exercise. Um, it's to turn the relationship into one of the city manager and I as, as the carrier, the carry-outers of your policy directions. So, what we're doing right now, and, and it's a good first start as I'm looking down these, is, is we're saying to the city manager and the city manager and quite frankly, me, is that the commission at large wishes these to be your focus. It's, it's not the end-all of your job. I mean, something could happen tomorrow and, and, and things go in a whole different direction. But from a policy direction as elected officials, the city commission has spent time thinking and these are directional items. They're not, they're not to be gauged, you know, on a scale of one to five. They're to be discussed at the end of the next session to say, okay, so what happened on item number twelve? What happened on item number, whatever? And to, to have a dialogue with the city manager and to either one of two things, agree that that issue has been taken care of or that that issue has not been taken care of and needs to go on the next round of, of directions. Or at, maybe at that time, it's no longer a, a, a direction that the, the, the commission wants to go in. But I, 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 I think the relationship between policy and policy implementation is not one, you know, where, where we give you a, you know, a scorecard. You, you hire your city manager right in your charter, right in your charter. You hire a city manager who you believe is qualified to carry out the fundamental duties of being a city manager. That's already in your charter. If your city manager is not carrying out the duties of being your city manager, well, I think you know the answer to that question. So, what we're trying to do here is, is fine-tune your thoughts into her implementation. So, I'll work on a document, I agree Lisa, I'll work on some guidance on how to, how to, how to adjudge these and how we'll do it at the end of the year. But please keep that in mind. We're, we're trying to switch the relationship from one of, you know, did you park in the right place? Did you show up on time? Did you, you know, conduct this many meetings? Did you go to this many things? To one of, you know, like, like, I, 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 I got the distinct impression, not to pick on you Jacob, but I got the distinct impression that one of the things you believe as a policy direction for the city of Marine City is to have an effective rental inspection process. Would I be right?
You are right and don't worry, I get picked on all the time.
I know, and that's why, that's, that's why you're like that kid in school that always gets called on. So, so, what, what I'm saying Jacob is, is that is a direction that you want to happen. So, let's just play out that direction as a way of an example. I mean, we've already dra, I've already provided some draft ordinances related to rental inspection. Elaine has looked at some of them and she had, there, you already have some stuff in place. And, and so, what, what will happen is between Elaine and I, if that's a policy direction, we should be getting back to you with an implementation of that desire. And that would be probably by way of an ordinance and, and a process, right? And, 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 and that, and then you would say, I'm glad we achieved that.
No, I, I would think so. And at the end of the year, when it comes time to evaluate, you know, evaluation time, you know, it, to me, it should be, you know, here, here is our, you know, here is the direction that we have set forth. Let's have a discussion about how do we do? Is, are there outstanding things? Did we achieve some things, you know, that, you know? But it should be more of a discussion, not, as you said, a check the box.
Yeah, because, because you're gonna look at, you, you, you look at your city manager and you say, okay, we gave you our policy. We're, we're the policymakers, we're the legislative body. And we gave you policy direction A and you did F. What, 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 what were you thinking? We, we want you to follow our direction. And so Elaine, Elaine is saddled statutorily and by charter with fundamental duties as being your city manager. You shouldn't hire a city manager if you don't think the city manager is qualified to be your city manager and do the fundamentals of being a city manager. On top of that, she's there along with your lawyer and with your other department heads to carry forth the procedure, to carry forth the policy direct, direction that you as a commission want. And you know, when, when you, uh, uh, when you go through, uh, election processes, you know what? We, we could get, we could get all new people filling your chairs who have a different sense of where the city should be headed, right? So, so-
All true.
So, I think you're, I, I think you're right. So, at the end of the year, you have to sit back and you have to say, okay, you know, I'm Jacob and one of the things I really wanted to see was, uh, was a, an effective rental inspection program in our community that would provide safety to the, to those who, who often are at prey of, of taking, uh, rental opportunities that are not safe. That's one of, you know, by me, I, I, that's one of my pet peeves is I, I think sometimes we, we allow renters to take the, a low, a low rent and, you know, we, the, the electrical connection is a, is a, uh, extension cord running from the living room. And, you know, I, I, I'm not real, real excited about that sort of thing. Um, so, so at the end of the year, you, you're gonna wanna say, well, where's Jacob's policy direction on getting a rental inspection program in place? And then, you know, and, and on and on down the, the line. And so, let's say we're done Jacob with the policy of, of implementing, um, a, a very effective rental inspection program. Then, then, you know, Jacob sits around as our elected official and says, okay, so, that's great. What do we, what is Jacob looking for next? And that's the way your relationship matures with your city manager.
Bob?
I've, I've said too much.
No, but here's my issue with this, okay. I don't have any problem with what you're saying, but we also have an obligation to the public. And the, the difference in this type of thing is that a city manager can request that she can have this in a closed session, which means the, the public has no, um, they can't hear it. They can't see how we feel, they can't see whether we think things are going well. They can't hear what she thinks, uh, maybe we could do better. They, they don't get any of that. And without documentation, it, it all just disappears into thin air. You know what I'm saying?
No, I agree. I agree. And, and, you know, I mean, there, there, there's a, there's a flippant answer to that, which I, I'm gonna say anyways. I mean, one of the things that, that, that you guys, you know, you, you guys are, you guys are in place by election and you're supposed to be carrying out the wishes of your constituents. So, you're in the same, you're in the same relationship with the voters that Elaine is in with you. Does that make some sense Lisa? So, you-
Yeah, that's-
You're only in that, you're in that chair Lisa, you've been in that chair for a while because there, the, the, the folks believe that you are a champion of their policy direction. And the minute you're not, guess what? You're not gonna be in that chair, right?
That's correct.
So, Elaine is in the city manag, manager's chair as long as she is doing her city manager job and she's carrying out the direction that the commissioners have given her. So, the mere fact that she's there amplifies that the commissioners are satisfied that she's carrying out that direction. And the mere fact that you're in your chair means the public, you, you, you would say the public believes you're carrying out their objectives.
But again, there's, there's no way to, to, to show them anything. You know what I'm saying? I mean, that, that sounds good.
I know, I know, but, but I mean, I, 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 I mean, um-
They expect me to do it in public, you know what I'm saying? And that's when I do my stuff, do it in public.
I unders, I understand, but there's, there's nothing, there's nothing that prevents, um, e- each time we pass one of these resolutions for somebody to say, you know, I hereby move the, the new resolution governing the policy directions for our city manager. And, uh, you know, the, the motion should include that we believe the city manager has, has done very well with the prior six months' worth of, of resolution objectives. But, I mean, I mean, to, to some degree, I, I, I think that, I think it really speaks a lot on that relationship, the, the one that you have with the community and the one that she has with you.
Yeah, but, I mean, there has to be an element of trust because we are all elected and, um, you know, the public has to trust that the city commission is going to do a, a proper evaluation and that's, that's why we're, that's why everybody voted for us, right?
And, and, and quite frankly, not, not to be harsh, i- if she's not carrying out your direction, guess what?
Right.
I, I mean, the answer's pretty, 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 pretty obvious.
Right. Okay, um, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on, a new business revolute, resi, revolution. Oh, my goodness. Resolution number zero, one, one, dash, two, zero, two, one, the fiscal year budget. Elaine, Megan?
Uh, I'll take that. So, this is the approval or adoption phase of the budget. The main topic of discussion that came out of when we were in our workshops was the building department. So, I have provided kind of an analysis of the building department and what we've paid out for really in annualized periods for our current situation with a part-time building official, part-time code enforcement, paying the permit fees and administration for a part-time person in the office. I have a comparative value annualized of what we paid our full-time building official that, uh, really did everything. So, this was the, the previous building official that did the, um, building inspections, the code enforcement. She did the planning, the zoning, she did rental inspections, kind of started that program rolling. So, you can see really from the annualized amounts and the per-hour costs that there really is not much of a cost difference in that. Uh, what my recommendation is going forward here is to put out an ad either, I'm sorry, not either, for a full-time building official and for a part-time permit clerk and see what we get in the next couple of weeks. I am very, uh, concerned about the amount of applicants that we would get for someone that will be able to do everything for the, uh, fifty-seven thousand dollars that we paid the previous building official. That fifty-seven thousand dollars included benefits and everything. Um, I, I think that we're chasing something that is really unachievable. We had a, a very unique person that was able to do everything in that position and taking on planning and zoning as well. So, I think between those two, we'll see what candidates we get and move forward.
What was the, what was the part-time one again? The part-time, what would you call it?
So, a permit technician. So, this is someone with a, a little bit more experience in the building department. So, uh, this would be someone that we would bring into the department at twenty-eight hours a week and would be there from ten to six, uh, Monday through Thursday in the building department.
Right, and, and then their full, their full responsibility is, um, to check and make sure everybody is permitted and everybody, the, the, basically the rental?
Right, this, this would be someone that would actually be dealing with the public and, and taking applications and would have a little bit of experience with, uh, building permits and being able to, uh, manage all of that. Uh, the person that we had in the position before was someone that was hired in, didn't have any experience. Uh, she was starting to gain some experience in the year that she had been here. But she was also partially in the treasures department. Uh, Megan feels that being able to have someone for the building department exclusively, she'll be able to absorb the, the time from the, uh, from, from the part of her position that was treasurers. Uh, this person will of course be just helping out generally with the, the counter and phones as well, though.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, especially with all the, um, the new projects we've got coming up in town, you know?
Yeah, we've been talking about the potential for, for the rental inspections as well. Um, talking about trying to find some type of way to, uh, make that funded by the fi, the fees for the rental inspections and that could potentially be an additional condition.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Elaine, Bill Clausen, you're, uh, permit clerk? Is that what you're talking about? For doing, doing the, uh, why the inspector is out doing his job, inspecting and stuff and following up on the, on the rules and the complaints? Uh, she would be able to, or he would be able to, uh, operate the DSNA program and being able to permit usually the building inspector would sign them, uh, look at them, sign them, pass them on to her and she would go on from there. on to her and she would go on from there. She would take them from the counter to him and he would re- a few, re- review them and then take them back out and she would type out and call the people to come and pay your permit.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking.
Okay.
Um, this is Lisa, what about if, uh, if you put it out for a building inspector and they don't wanna do code enforcement, are you gonna look at possibly splitting that? I know Elginak has a different person for their code enforcement.
Well, if we did that, then we'd have to increase the budget.
Did you look at the fee schedules? Cause we talked about that also.
We look at the fee schedule once or twice every single year. So what I do before the budget is I put the fee schedule out to all the department heads, they take a look at it and see if it's in line with other communities, if it's in line with the, the city. Uh, fees, we can't make money off of fees, this is something that's to cover our costs. So they're reviewed every year, if not twice every year.
No, we, we talked about whether the fees could be used to, to foot the bill for this versus that we're giving so much away, you know what I'm saying? Cause like where, where Bill works, he doesn't get paid the fees.
And, and that's why I broke it out in the manner that I did, so that you have really a, a cost of what this system is where they get some of the permit fees versus a system where you don't get any of the permit fees. The per hour that we're paying out is virtually the same.
Can you also put something together in the event that you had to split the job into a code enforcement and the other, what would be the additional cost?
So code enforcement, that line item, we're doing ten hours a week right now, is eighty-five hundred dollars a year. So if, say, we went back to a full-time building official at the same cost that we were paying before, the, the total compensation package was fifty-seven thousand, we'd have to add another eighty-five hundred to that.
And you think ten hours a week's enough for code enforcement? Does that include everything, or would the permit clerk be helping that person also?
The permit clerk would be helping that person also. So doing the letters and mailings and things like that.
So, uh, do you think that the percentage is high on that, Bill Claussen? Because if they're getting a wage per hour and they're not doin', and, uh, they're not working on that and they're out doing permits, uh, for example, um, last month I was helping out of the community, I did forty inspections. So it's, you know, I mean, and if I got paid by the inspection instead of by the hour, I'd probably be, uh, carrying a bag to the bank.
So, so we've paid out six thousand dollars in permit fees to our building officials so far this year. So we've got, what, a couple more months left in this fiscal year? So it's not like we're talking about big money here.
Well, it is when you give them a percentage and a wage.
You know, sixteen thousand and six thousand for someone with the, the skills and qualities that Tracy has, I, I think is very defined with the market.
Anyone else? So what are you gonna propose, a part-time or full-time building inspector?
So in my recommendation, I said that I wanna put an ad out for, um, both positions and see what kind of resumes I get back and go from there.
All right, the only, especially today's day and age, you never know. Everybody wants to work.
Yeah, it's, it'll be, it'll be huge.
So we're gonna do an ad for a full-time and not a part-time, uh, permit clerk.
Right, it'll, it'll be two very different directions, we'll have to see the, the quality and amount of resumes that we get back. Certainly if we go in that direction of going back to a full-time building official, that's something that has to come back to city commission for approval for that department head position.
Yep, yep. So currently this year is not in the current budget?
We have either one of these scenarios covered in the budget. So if we, say, want to go with a full-time building official and have a separate code enforcement, that would be an eighty-five hundred dollar increase in the budget. If we want to, say, go to a full-time permit clerk instead of someone that'll be here thirty hours a week, we're gonna have to add like twenty-five thousand to the budget because you're gonna have the additional hours and the potential for benefits. Now, obviously it may be someone that either doesn't need benefits or the benefits are significantly less expensive, but those are kind of the numbers that we will be looking at. I don't think that we're gonna really know until we get an ad out there and see what kind of responses we get back.
But, but what I'm saying, if I look at your current building, um, department here, you only have twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars in here for full and part-time wages.
This is the treasurer, can I, can I jump in and, and provide a little clarification related to this question? Please do. Okay, so, kinda back going off of what Lisa and Bill were elaborating on, um, uh, the current building inspector is paid completely out of contractual services. So they're paid out of three seventy-one, eight oh two GL. So as you'll see, we've got a budget of forty thousand dollars. Now, the permit cost may not seem like a lot as of right now, he does get paid seventy-five percent of every single permit that comes in. However, we can only estimate how much in permit revenue we're gonna get in the next year and when he actually completes these jobs. So even though his forty thousand dollars that we have budgeted for, it could be sixty thousand dollars, it could be seventy thousand dollars, it could be twenty thousand dollars. It's solely dependent upon how much we actually get in permits, uh, and when those are generated, the size of those jobs. So that could fluctuate drastically depending on, again, the permits themselves. The part-time wages are, yes, they were built in there for our administrative clerk, uh, who Elaine is now referring to as the permit tech, she's kind of looking to bring in, um, and that was her portion of the wages when she had left. If you were to hire a full-time person to come in, you would reduce down the contractual services and you would put the money towards your full-time, uh, expenditures. You would also reduce down your part-time, uh, expenditure line item and you would increase the, uh, defined contribution and the health insurance depending on how much they get in health insurance. So I understand it might be a little more confusing to cite all those GLs, but basically it's taking the money and putting it in different GLs. That's what would happen, if that makes better sense.
On your rental, on your rental inspection, shouldn't the inspections cover the cost of the, of that, um, inspector?
Bill, I completely agree with you. I do think, um, although I understand the city manager, when she is discussing her options at that time, when she brought in Tracy to the fold, I do understand your concerns with the hourly wage and the portion of the, the amounts that are paid out. I, I agree with you, with the amount of hours that are allocated to actually being in the office, I still think the, the paperwork is not so much the issue. I think the inspections themselves are, uh, there's a really, a large volume of rental inspections that need to be done, that haven't been done whatsoever, and I don't see how it's possible with the current structure to have them completed.
Baltimore, uh, issues those, uh, once a year, but they do the inspections, uh, throughout the year and they have a part-time guy do that. They also have a, well, your plumbing mechanical are still part-time and, and your electrical and I think the, the building official, and they just hired one in IRA, and he's only gonna work three days a week. So you might look at it that way, too, so many days a week.
So you're saying it's split in both communities, you have a building and a rental inspector?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, anyone else? Are we just talking the building department at this point?
Yes, I guess.
I have another question in another area. Go ahead. Megan, um, the water rates, this year you weren't gonna increase them and you're, I think, I believe you were gonna use stimulus money?
Um, I don't know that stimulus money is the correct word for it, but, uh, it is from the, it's the American, uh, Rescue Plan. I mean, it's, we don't have, we always have is a figure that does not ha- hold any, uh, significant weight to it currently, hopefully we'll know here in the next couple of weeks, but it was ballparked for around four hundred thousand. Um, so yes, if we do, ultimately it's the commission's decision what they wanna do with the money. There's only four different, um, uses that you can use for it. I think infrastructure would be the wisest decision because that is one of your greatest needs and, uh, it's an easy way to not burden your residents with, uh, an increase because you have the money being allocated to you already from the federal government. It's not something we're asking for.
Let, let me ask a question first in there. Okay, so you're gonna use this, part of this money to cover an, uh, an increase that would have taken place this year and what, on an average, they were two to three percent?
Yes.
Okay, and do you think you're gonna do the same thing next year? You think you'll still have the money?
Well, your increases of two percent, even though it seems like, when you say two percent to residents, uh, I'm sure it's like, wow, two percent.
That's a lot.
But it's only, uh, uh, well, as a whole, you generate about forty thousand dollars altogether on that two percent because you're only raising the water rate, you're not raising two percent on every single thing that they're charged on, you're only using it on the actual metered usage of water and sewer, that's it. That's all the two percent's ever affected.
That's correct, but it still is a big increase for some people. So my question is, so we do this this year, okay? And then eventually, I don't know how many times we do this, and eventually that money disappears and we ha- no longer have it. And then the water, what happens to the water rates? Are they gonna have to be increased a larger amount because we've been supplementing it for the last year or two?
That is, uh, I, I do understand your thought process with it and I think there's a legitimate, uh, concerns with that. It's not being supplemented, the water rates are primarily driven by your capital needs and what kind of projects that the city puts themselves into. So for instance, you have a very, uh, to my knowledge, one of the largest water projects that you're about to enter into, um, on Main Street. We are guessing it's gonna be close to, not guessing, but using a pretty good estimate, it's gonna be close to about eight hundred thousand as we talked about at the workshop. Um, so you start looking at, you know, your capital expenditures as they are outlaid right now and then when you go into your budget next year, you see what kind of capital needs, are they the same, have they increased, decreased, and what kind of projects you wanna take on, so...
No, 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 I, I'm good with the projects. What I'm getting at is the water and sewer rates, period. Every year we raise them two to three percent because we have a drop in use and we have to cover to make sure that we've got enough money for the account. I'm only talking about water and sewer rate increases.
What do you mean a drop in use? I'm not sure what you're, you're...
Well, every year we raise the rates and every year everybody uses less water, which means the next year we gotta raise the rates again. Because we're not using enough to cover the cost.
We do a three-year comparison on it when I, a ballpark as to how much you need for an estimate and yes, some years it's decreased, some years it's increased. It's probably a lot to do with rates, sometimes has to do with the weather. You got a really hot summer, people are gonna use more water regardless.
Well, regardless, we've raised the rates every year since I've been on this board at least two to three percent. So I'm, I'm just trying to get at this because this is the factor that, that affects the public. And, and everybody hates our water rates as it is and normally every year they've increased, every single year that I've been coming to these meetings, even before I was on the board, it's always increased. So that's what I'm getting at. If, if we're gonna cover the cost of this increase and then all of a sudden that goes away, what I wanna know is, is that how you're gonna handle that? And then in two years, we have a six percent increase, not just a three percent increase. See what I'm saying?
Yes, I don't believe it's justified in any way if that is the funds, the amount of funds that you come in to ask the residents for a rate increase. Regardless of, if I go out there and ask them for two percent right now, it's even more money I'm gonna be taking on. So to me, if you're getting four hundred thousand dollars and you're used to getting thirty or forty, that's not insinuating you're never gonna have a rate increase in the next five, six, seven years. I can't answer what your capital outlay needs are gonna be a year from now, I can only go off the information I have right now. I don't feel that that's going to happen, that you're gonna get a five, six, seven percent increase or some astronomical figure, but in the same sentence, I don't know what your capital needs and projects are gonna be. I don't know where our revenues are gonna be as a whole. I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into it, I can only go off of current, current day, what information that we have.
Yeah, I understand that. All I'm saying is that we've increased it year, uh, regularly, every year, and if we supplement that or we use the COVID money or whatever the heck you wanna call it, um, all I'm concerned about is that people think, oh, we didn't do increase it this year and maybe we don't increase it next year, but then the third year, that money disappears and, and say the amount went down, um, then we gotta hit them with a bigger increase long-term, you know what I'm saying? All at once. Instead of these small little increases, it could be a bigger increase later on.
Do you wanna increase the rates?
I never vote to increase the rates, but it's a enterprise fund and that fund has to, you know, maintain itself.
Right, and, uh, as Mr. McBride had indicated in our audit, that's a great thing to bring up, is that our fund is well over, I believe, a hundred percent funded. So to me, um, again, there's a lot of arguments that I, I don't see bringing forth a rate increase, but again, I understand your concerns and I don't, um, think that they're not legitimate. However, I can't forecast where it's gonna be four or five years from now, there's too many things to take into consideration year to year.
Anyone else?
I, this is Bill, I, I just wondered if we're, uh, talking to any other municipalities around us to sell them water?
About what?
Well, other municipalities around us, we already sell a bunch to Cotterville, uh, and I think, uh, China's looking to buy water. So I'm just wondering if we're, we've had discussions with them.
I don't know.
No, I haven't heard of anything, um, Bill. However, I did just wanna add one last thing for the, uh, conversation with Commissioner, Commissioner Hendrick, and that's that also what's helping in this is that we did implement the base rate policy, which is bringing in about six thousand dollars a year, and we also eliminated those leak adjustments, which were veering anywhere to about thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So that's also helping increase your, uh, revenue.
Anyone else? Okay, I got a couple more comments yet for the budget and then I'll finish it up. Um, the house demo, um, the county said that they were gonna find us money for that, yet we're gonna spend thirty-five thousand dollar money to tear it down. Have you heard any more from the county on this?
Uh, still working on that. I do have something regarding the marina that they're, uh, hoping to contribute forty-five thousand for the marina.
Yeah, but that's for the marina, I, I'm looking at that we gotta tear down a house that we're gonna pay full price on. Um, I guess it's just a few things...
That's all I've received from them.
Yep. Um, I guess I'm just concerned with this budget. Um, it is a complex budget and we should, we should've spent more time on it and there should've been a lot more questions, I would've thought, from people. We only spent one day, two hours, um, I guess I asked the majority of the questions in there, but I, I'm just concerned that the spending is going, um, way over on this particular budget. I'm not in favor of it, um, I think we gotta worry about that if we get into a recession that's gonna cause additional issues, um, and I think giving raises based on cost of living and not performance is another thing that I saw in this budget that's kind of odd. So, um, I wish more people would come out and look at these budgets, I know they're difficult to look at, it seems simple, but there's a lot of stuff that's kinda buried in there that most people wouldn't know about. Um, I just think this one here is, uh, way more spinning than's necessary and I don't think it's a good line to keep following.
Well, I think that when it comes to budgets, I mean, we've got a financial director that, uh, is, in my opinion, extremely sharp, we've got a city manager that knows how to work budgets and we've got the backing of McBride and Manley, who are all...
who are also um, certified uh, CP, you know, they're CPAs. So um, sometimes you have to trust the professionals. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I just, Bill Clausen. I was just wondering, last year, we gave uh, raises to people to bring them up to speed and now you wanna give them another raise this year? That's all I have.
Okay, I need a motion.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve resolution number zero-one-one-two-zero-two-one, the twenty-one-twenty-two fiscal year budget.
It's Callahan, support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No, I don't like raises.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving on to banners for the class of twenty-twenty-one, Elaine?
This is a proposal very similar to what we received last year from Marine City High School to be able to put banners up for the seniors due to the restrictions that they have for graduation because of COVID. Uh, Mike did provide his information about what his costs are. He spent a couple thousand dollars last year of his wages for uh, putting up the banners. And uh, KCA Tree Service donated some time to assist with that as well. Uh, this is something that uh, I think Sheri is on the line if you have any questions regarding it.
Hi Sheri, are you there?
I'm here, thank you.
Hi, this is Mary, this is Mayor Van Kamen.
Hello.
Hi, it's Cheryl Verkaman.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think this is a great idea. Um, so I, I believe, we did this last year and I think the kids really loved it. You know, I, I saw many, many uh, seniors standing underneath their banners, taking pictures with their families and, and things like that. So um, in my opinion, we'd, we'd love to do this again.
Yeah, under the circumstances we've had the last couple of years, ending last year under COVID and this year uh, experiencing in school, out of school and everything. Uh, we thought it was a nice gesture um, just to honor these kids for everything they've missed out on and it was really nice to see the support of the city last year. And it was really cool to drive around and see all our kids hanging up there.
Yep, I agree. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Ross. I was curious, what happens with the banners when they are taken down? Are the students able to keep?
Yes, each of the students gets their banner.
Thanks. Um, I guess from my standpoint, then I'd just ask, I'm sorry, Elaine, did you actually say that uh, one of the employees donated part of their salary towards uh, printing the banners?
Uh, no, no. Uh, K- KCA Tree Service donated sixteen hours of their time.
Oh, okay, thank you.
That was very, very nice. Anyone else?
Yes, this is Commissioner Hendrick. Last year, I suggested that we take this two thousand dollars out of the commission's budget, which looks like we still can do that again this year. Can we do that, Elaine?
Elaine, can I answer that actually?
Yeah, go ahead, Megan.
Um, it, Commissioner Hendrick, that's, that's not necessary. Um, it's, if you're referring to the, are you talking about the actual installation of them? Is that what you guys voted to do the two thousand for last year?
Last year, that, she was looking for the money and we decided to take it out of our budget because that way, it didn't affect anything else. And I realize the city has money in their general fund, but I think it's a good thing for the commission to do once in a while to take it out of their own budget and pay for it.
The, uh, the issue was though, why we didn't actually do that is because it was DPW employees that were hanging them. So if that's where we're specifically talking about the two thousand dollars coming in from is their wages, the commission doesn't actually have wage column beyond.
No, we took the money from our budget and put it in there for their wages.
But it was, yes, something you wanted to do, but we didn't actually do it. That's what I'm trying to say.
Oh, that's interesting, cuz that's what we voted on.
Anyone else?
So where's the money coming out of? Cuz we have to specify. I, I mean, I mean, I'll for this, I voted for it last year. I think it's a great thing for the kids cuz it's been a terrible, another terrible year, but we still have to specify.
The reason why it did not come out of commission is because it was DPW employees that were putting up these banners. And we have to pay them out of the DPW department. That's where it got charged to. They're working on their regular hours. They charge it to their own departments for what they were working. And it's coming, regardless if it comes out of the commission fund or the, or, excuse me, the commission department or DPW department, it's still coming out of the general fund.
Thank you, Megan. Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the um, putting up the banners and using the two thousand dollars out of the city's budget for our portion.
Support, Bill Clausen.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the charter cruise boat, um, city dockage. Um, Elaine, you wanna talk about this?
Sure. Uh, we received this request from Paul Gallus for docking his boat, the Friendship and the Captain Paul, on our seawall exclusively on the uh, south side of the, this Leboon Bridge, southwest side. Um, so he has included supporting documentation and what it is that he's willing to do for the exclusive use of the seawall. Uh, Paul Gallus is available if you have any questions. Uh, just to let you know, we have about a hundred and fifty feet of uh, seawall area there. And uh, we have a little bit of space on the north end, which is where we're working on putting the kayak launch. And then obviously, right across from there is the property that we're looking at acquiring for the marina.
Right. Paul, um, you're here. Uh, would you like to talk to us about this um, this project that you have?
Well, sure, I am here and uh, hello, everyone. Um, I've got uh, this, the Friendship, it's a, it's a sixty-eight foot boat that carries up to a hundred and fifty passengers, excuse me. And um, I've operated it for quite a few years on the Clint, on the Clinton River out of Mount Clemens, downtown Mount Clemens. And uh, I have recently moved to uh, Marine City. Actually, I probably live just a block away from the uh, the property site there for the uh, location that I'm looking at right now for that boat. Um, I'm looking to do something with it. I, it's the only uh, property that I haven't sold yet. I wouldn't basically, you know, thought I was gonna get into a kind of a retirement mode here. And uh, I have developed this idea that it might be an interest, that, you know, the city of Marine City is, is, in my opinion, so ready and so ideal for a, a smaller uh, tour boat operation. And I just thought that this would uh, you know, I might be able to do something uh, really good for the town here and um, uh, give myself something to do as a, more of a semi-retirement kind of a gig, I guess you might say.
Right. Um, I think it's a great idea. Um, uh, you wanna talk about, you know, bringing in, um, first off, the boat just being docked there is, is advertisement and it's a, it's a, it's a nice looking boat. I've been on it. Um, and the thing that I like too is um, if you could start getting back into the floating, um, the floating classroom, um, which is part of the uh, GLP program, right?
Right, yeah. We've done that, we've established that program uh, way back in nineteen ninety-one. We started our first year with that. And we did three fourth grade classrooms there in Mount Clemens and we grew that program into a really uh, sensational program. I mean, it, uh, before COVID, we were, we had that program up to uh, three hundred fourth grade classrooms a year. And uh, it was, it's just a super, super program, won all kinds of rewards, uh, awards at the University of Michigan and Michigan State University. And uh, uh, it's just a, it's a real educational experience for fourth graders. I believe, I talked to the uh, people that coordinate that program right now. They are, it, it, everything is on hold because of the COVID. But they are hoping to reestablish the program in uh, twenty-twenty-two. Um, as of right now, we were in, we started in McComb County. We extended it out to Wayne County, which we operate out of Lake Erie Metro Park down there. And uh, the coordinators are very interested in moving the program into Saint Clair County as well. It just creates this uh, water awareness program for uh, the fourth graders. It tries to make them, you know, good stewards of our, the resource here and uh, uh, make them aware of what exactly it is that we have, where they live and, and how fortunate they are to be on this kind of uh, freshwater system. And uh, it's just an awesome program. So it would be very, I would uh, love if uh, we could continue that program up here into uh, Marine City and Saint Clair County. I think it would uh, it would be wonderful for the county. So that's one thing. And then also, I, you know, wanna give uh, the general public an opportunity to uh, cruise the river as well. And um, I was thinking that there would be like a Friday, Saturday, Sunday cruise schedule. Maybe one cruise on Friday, two on Saturday, one on Sunday through June, July and August. Um, I don't wanna, you know, I mean, I'm not looking to book as many cruises as I can and work as hard as I can. I'm kind of, I'm, I'm not a young man anymore, but um, I uh, I still enjoy getting out there and, and uh, showing off, you know, the waterway that we uh, that we live on.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea and some, sometimes, you know, um, we, cuz we live here and, you know, a lot of us are boaters, we kinda forget um, how many people don't get an opportunity to go for a little boat ride. And they're happy as can be to go for an hour up or an hour back, uh, learn a little history about the waterways. If you see a freighter, I know you're very educated in freighters, you know, to talk about the freighters and things like that. Um, and I, I will share with everyone that I, I was part of the GLP program. Um, I was on your boat. I, I helped teach the fourth graders. Um, this is when I lived a long time ago in Harrison Township and it was a fantastic program. The kids loved being on the boat. They did, we did all kinds of experiments with them. Uh, water quality, water clarity, um, Marlin Spike with knot tying, just all kinds of stuff. And um, having that, having that floating classroom here is, I think, a fantastic, fantastic asset to the community.
Does anybody else have any questions for Paul?
Hey, Paul, it's Jake. Hey, I have a few questions for you. Are you going to be looking or requiring a shore power connection?
Uh, yes, I would, I definitely uh, am in need of a shore power connection, yes.
Okay, cuz I don't believe there's one at that site, but correct me if I'm wrong, so that, that you have to be something.
No, there, there isn't. There is a pole on the property though and I, I've talked to an electrician and uh, uh, the, getting the type of service that I need for the boat on the property, I mean, it's beyond the issue that it's an expense. Uh, that, it, it's not much of a hurdle.
Okay, what about sewage pump out?
Uh, sewage is another issue. I need to, uh, I have a holding tank on the boat as, it holds uh, six hundred and fifty gallons of sewage. And I've, I'm talking to a few different people right now uh, on the Bell River. One of them has uh, uh, Bill Rose at Rose Marine, he, he's pretty new on the river as well. He just started this year. He does have a pump out service at his dock. I haven't uh, t- talked to him directly yet about his, but there's another uh, person on the river that just bought this year as well and he does have sewage on his property. And he said that he would be willing to uh, work a pump out system with me as well. And of course, uh, the bottom line there, if, if both of those failed on me, I would, I, you know, I would be uh, I would have to use a septic truck. Uh, and I suppose uh, it would take, uh, I could probably run seven or eight trips at a time before I would need to have a se, you know, a septic tank coming, uh, septic truck come and pump me out. So those are the options with sewer. So sewer is, sewer is the biggest hurdle that I've got to overcome. And uh, I, I don't think it's that big of an issue, so.
Okay, um, the next question, are you planning on rolling a fuel truck up in there and fueling your boat from a fuel truck? Or are you gonna go to a separate fuel dock?
I have typically through the years, I've always used a fuel truck at, on location. And I believe that, I don't believe it would be an issue to fuel right there. Um, I've been, I've used Spencer Oil. I've been using Spencer Oil for the last thirty years uh, at my, at my dock and uh, uh, they're very familiar with uh, fueling, uh, you know, maritime, in marinas and things like that. And uh, um, I, we've, we've never had an issue. In thirty years, we've never had an issue, so.
Okay, and then um, the last one I have is, are the, the mooring facilities, the pilings, et cetera, are they adequate for your vessel?
Uh, we're pretty close right now. Any, any of those modifications, and it would be, they'd be slight modifications that I would have to make if any. Um, you know, I would just assume that responsibility myself, but the waterway itself, it, it's a very calm waterway. Uh, it's uh, um, there, there's not a lot going on there with respect to uh, boat movement or anything. Uh, it, which is, which I truly love because it creates a very safe environment as well uh, for passengers. And um, I, you know, what's there right now is probably pretty close to being adequate enough. When I get the, uh, the, the bu, the property or the vessels up here and uh, you know, I start to fine tune it at the wall, if there's something that I need to do, you know, I'd be capable of doing whatever I need to do on my own and it wouldn't be much. I mean, uh, from what I can see right now, we're, we're probably awful close to everything that I need right there.
Okay, are you planning on mooring the vessels um, um, one abreast of the other or in line with one?
No, they'd be in tandem. So the uh, the support vessel would be uh, closest to the bridge and uh, the um, the, the tour boat would be, would dock behind it.
Got it. And then uh, ju- just to circle back real quick for the electrical service, are you planning on, assuming we go forward with this, are you planning on adding that service or would you be requiring the city to provide that service and the meter?
Uh, no, as, as part of my proposal, I uh, I uh, would add, supply that service uh, at my own expense.
Okay, uh, sorry, one more question that popped in my mind. Is the water depth there adequate for your vessels?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
So Paul, you've um, you've docked both boats there and, and because obviously, there's a bridge easement, right? We gotta be able to get to the bridge to, you know, paint, repair, whatever. Um, and there's still plenty of room with the a hundred and fifty foot uh, linear feet on the seawall?
Right, exactly. And I mean, everything's easily movable. The, the vessel that would be docked closest to the bridge has a, you know, a flared, uh, it's a, uh, the, the bow uh, narrows, you know, from the, on the boat so that it wouldn't uh, that would be the part of the vessel that would be up by the bridge abutment and so it would be basically out of the way of the abutment, wouldn't, wouldn't have contact with it.
Right, yeah. I've seen, I've seen the boat, or your big boat parked there and um, even though it's a big boat, I mean, when it sits there, it doesn't look, it doesn't look like it's.
Uh, it sits there beautiful. I had it, I came up here years ago. I don't remember when it was exactly, but I did uh, maritime days in Marine City. I'll bet you it was fifteen years ago. And uh, we, I was here for the whole weekend and we ran trips. Uh, we went from uh, that dock and we ran upriver to Saint Clair, turned around to Saint Clair and came back. I probably ran eight or nine trips. I was here for a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the whole weekend. And uh, the boat operated real well. I, I was real pleased. It sits at that dock real nice. It's uh, easy bo, it's easy on, easy off. And uh, the, the property is kind of ideal for the boat.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea and it's a, like you said in your proposal, it's a win-win for the city cuz you're basically taking all the responsibility of everything. I mean, we were going to um, I mean, we were going to, um, collect your rent and let you do your things. Uh, anybody else have any questions?
Yes.
Yeah. Like to ask this question. It's for your, you say, uh, you can get, uh, a hundred and fifty people on the boat?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, uh, okay, so downtown, are you gonna try to do a cross parking agreement with the church or somebody? Or where are they gonna park?
Well, I mean, we, uh, you know, um, w- Water Street is, is certainly a possibility. I mean, there is public parking on, on their, um, you know, on the, in front of the church and in front of the church parking lot on both sides of the street there. But I've also been working with some businessmen in town and, uh, I'm working with, at another private property with a sizable parking lot on it, on the corner of, um, Parker and Chartier. And I, I, at a fast glance, it looked like I could put fifty or sixty cars on that site quite easily. And, uh, that would be way more than, you know, all that I would need for that. And, uh, we have a little, uh, shuttle bus in town that, uh, I've also been talking to the guy that owns that and he has obliged me to use that when I, a- a- as needed basis, whenever I need it. And there's also a third party that I haven't met yet, but, uh, one of the, uh, local restaurant guys was talking to me about it. He is gonna have some golf carts in town and he's gonna have some four passenger and six passenger golf carts that would make a very convenient, um, shuttle to and from that particular parking lot, uh, uh, to the boat back and forth. And, uh, even if there was no shuttles or the fact is it's on three to four tenths of a mile, I kind of walked it off with my car. It's a very, it would be a five minute walk and most people that, you know, could make the walk might just enjoy the walk. It's, uh, it's a pretty simple walk as well. But we will definitely try to accommodate anybody that can't make that walk, uh, with a, with a shuttle service of some kind, either golf carts or, uh, the small fifteen passenger bus.
Yeah, just so the commissioners know, um, I, I did, uh, meet with Paul prior to this and, you know, cause I had, I had some questions and, um, we, we worked out a lot of things and, cause parking, parking obviously was a, a huge issue for me too. So I'm really glad that the private business owner, um, uh, is allowing, um, Paul to, in the friendship, to use that, that corner lot that's big and it's just sitting there. So that's, that's a good thing. Anyone else?
Yes, I have one. Um, and I, I'm, I, I think this is a great thing that, that you're trying to do, but my question's gonna go towards the attorney. Um, Bob, this particular property is a street end for Brown Street, which butts to the river. And that creates problems with the, um, rules for, uh, you know, um, access.
Why do you say that? Why, yeah, I'm here, why, I'm, I'm, so.
Well, cause they created a public act, when you have a road end, a street end, that provides public access to the river, okay? And there's the state rules regarding that unfortunately. And there's a Public Act fifty-six of two thousand twelve that relates to this. So what I want to know is can we really lease this out? Because it says in there, you can't have vessels docked between twelve and midnight. There's all sorts of goofy rules, um, because of it being a street end that butts to a river.
Yeah, I mean, those, those, that all arose out of the Supreme Court case Thompson v. Enz, E N Z. And, um, where, where there was a long fight in Michigan about road, uh, road ends that end at waterways. Uh, but most of that is, relates to inland lakes and in, and, um, not, not rivers and, and, and the waterways of the United States, which this is.
Well, but our.
I can take a quick, no, I, I.
I wish you would because I know our prior attorney, even Mr. Yakum, we've had this discussion. In fact, the city had to clear off docks on all these street ends at one time. Everybody knows about that, that's happened several times. But there's access issues. I just want to make sure that we don't get in trouble with these, um, when we're trying to lease out a piece of property that somebody doesn't come back and say, well, that's a street end access and you're denying me that right, you know, yada, yada.
No, I hear, I hear you.
To cover that base.
I understand, I totally get your question. Um, I, uh, when I was a younger lawyer, I tried all the cases up on Higgins Lake and Houghton Lake about road end access. And, uh, so I'm, I, I'll get, I'll, I'll, I'll get to that answer.
Oh, and the other thing too, um, um, Paul, um, how about ADA compliance? Do you have proper ramps and stuff for people?
Uh, we do the best we can. Where ADA, uh, regulations, uh, cease to exist on those kind of operations because, uh, of the practical part of it. You have to have, uh, you know, combings and things around doorways and hatches and, uh, to stop water's flow, uh, you know, that might come aboard and things like that. So we do what we can for, uh, handicapped people and through the years, we've, uh, serviced them extremely well. We've gotten many, many wheelchairs onboard and stuff like that. But, uh, it's just what we can accomplish on our own. We don't really have any guidelines from ADA, no.
Okay, well, I was mainly looking for them to be able to get on and off to your vessel.
Yeah, we, we do everything we can for them. And I mean, even, uh, at other, uh, certain docks that I, I pulled up to, I mean, even to the crew lifting wheelchairs and getting them onboard, I mean, we really, uh, we really want to, uh, accommodate everybody that we, that wants to get out there. And, uh, and we do our very best. But again, uh, you know, ADA doesn't really have guidelines for us, uh, because of the nature of the, uh, you know, the environment.
Um, if, if you lease this space, are you gonna maintain the grass?
That's a good question. Uh, that's a question I didn't think about. Uh, we, I suppose I can. I mean, I, it, I don't know if the city's on a circuit right now, uh, you know, I, but I can, uh, I mean, it's a small piece. Um, I, I didn't think of that, uh, so I would, I, you know, I, we could, that can go either way. It's fine with me if I maintain it. If the city's on a program, a routine program that they stop by their property, uh, once a month or something, that's fine with me too. It, it doesn't, I, I don't care. As long as it stays good.
This is the, this is Elaine. I did actually have communication with Mike regarding the grass mowing. And, uh, his concern about him mowing it is that you would potentially have grass clippings on your boat. I, I don't see that it would be a problem for us mowing it as long as you acknowledge that that might be an issue.
Yeah, that's, that would be a no issue at all Elaine, um, and that, that's a, that, that would not be an issue.
Anyone else?
I guess pending the, um, the, you know, our attorney looking at the street end issue, how are we gonna handle this? Is this gonna go back to the, um, CED board? And are they gonna try to work out all the details for the rest of this? Or is it just gonna go through Elaine for the lease agreement if, if we can get that far?
I don't see that this would go to the CED board. I know the, the CED board talked about it. This has not generated from the CED board. This is something that came to the, the city offices directly from Paul Gallus. Uh, certainly we'll work with the attorney to make sure that we get a lease agreement put together. Uh, you could approve this subject to the review from legal and an acceptable contract.
Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion.
Sorry, this is Commissioner Ross, yeah, I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Brian.
Uh, in addition to what Lisa was asking, uh, were you planning on to provide any sort of path, uh, down to the boat? I just feel if you can, potentially hundreds of people walking aboard at any given time, uh, it's gonna wear a significant rut in the grass. I don't, I don't feel like it would necessarily be kept up well, uh, or, you know, but would you be willing to provide a walkway or some, something along those lines that would deter, uh, you know, too much wear and tear on the grass?
I mean, I could, I, I, I'm trying to, I'm just imagining the other cruises that I did off that site. It's, uh, as the people come and go, um, it didn't seem to have much impact. And I, and we would definitely keep the grass cut, either myself or the city, whoever cuts, uh, you know, we'd keep it cut down anyway. Um, and there's, uh, I mean, I think I would try to leave it as natural as could be, actually. I mean, I, I just, I think just leaving it open the way it sits is, is kind of adequate enough. I mean, I.
Right, you have to also remember that you're only talking about four times a week, right?
Yeah, and it's not much of a, I mean, the space, it's not, it's just simply, it's not much of a space.
Right.
Um, coming from the road, I, I, uh, you know, I mean, it's just, I, I, I don't even know the depth of the property, but I, it's, it's not much over thirty-five feet or something, the, from the sidewalk to the, to the, where people would board the boat.
Yeah.
Um, so there's not a lot there.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had a couple more then. So would, would you, uh, provide signage as well? I mean, it, it is fairly obvious, there's a big boat in front of you. But, you know, would you provide signage to say something along the line, you know, please walk through here? Or, you know, as people aren't like jumping the guardrail and stuff that's there, I just.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, there'll be some kind of signage right there at the boat and, uh, probably even a, a, a sign up on, uh, Parker Street, uh, you know, dedicating, uh, that parking space for my, for the boat as well. And, um, yeah, there'd be a sign at the boat that would identify the boat as the tour boat. And, uh, you know, where the, uh, loading, uh, where the loading, uh, gangway is.
Okay, and then finally it would be to rent the entire plot, right? So the whole hundred and fifty feet. So that would mean that there's no public, uh, water access on that side of the Labune Bridge.
Right, I would definitely be asking for exclusive use. I wouldn't even want to fool around with, uh, other boats that could hinder the operation. I just, I would definitely want exclusive use, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion, um, uh, we just, we, we need to add subject to attorney's findings, um, for the, um, easement access.
And subject to a lease agreement.
Correct, yeah, sorry, and that too, the two. Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the leasing of the lot or the, um, the tour boat company subject to the attorney's review and a signed lease agreement.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to, um, the engineering and survey proposal for Community Development Block Grant Project.
I'll try and be quick about this. Uh, the Infrastructure Subcommittee Group met back in April and took a look at some roads that were, um, con- considered to be in need of some repairs. And we're looking at the Community Development Block Grant funding to be able to fund those repairs. Uh, the group all agreed on these four particular streets for the CDBG funding. And one of the things that we need to do at this point is to, uh, approve a proposal from PCE Engineering for seventy-two hundred dollars to do the preliminary plans for this project. Uh, you have all of the detailed information regarding estimated costs for it. This is a application for, uh, the Community Development Block Grant funding that is due at the end of the month. So time is important. We are one of only two communities that are actually eligible for this money in our county. Us in Yale are the only ones. Uh, it's a pretty unique, uh, opportunity because it only requires a ten percent match. And the grant amounts are ranging from five hundred thousand to two million. The group agreed and felt comfortable with a project that was, uh, one million dollars. So we're kind of in the, the middle, which hopefully is kind of the sweet spot for this. And our match obviously would be ten percent. So looking to approve the motion for PCE to, to the, uh, do the preliminary plans for the proposal for the CDBG money.
Talk about getting bang for your buck.
Yeah.
Right, seventy-two hundred dollars spent for almost a million?
Uh, it's gonna be a little bit more than that. Uh, seventy-two hundred is just the preliminary, uh, drawings that they have to do for the application. Uh, ultimately, there will be other costs that are involved in the project.
Oh, okay, but still.
Yeah, for, for a million bucks, a ten percent match of about a hundred thousand, uh, I don't think that you can really beat that.
No, and everyone's always, uh, concerned with our streets. Okay, anybody have any questions?
No questions. I'd just like to thank Mike for finding this and, uh, getting this all put together cause, uh, this is a real biggie and that's another four streets with infrastructure that we can get off our list.
Absolutely, anyone, uh, anyone else? Okay.
Do you have a figure?
I'm sorry, say that to me again.
Uh, did in the motion, do we have a figure or cost?
Seventy-two is a start, all right. This is Commissioner.
Go ahead.
This is Commissioner Hendrick. I'll make a motion to approve the PCE Engineering and Survey Proposal for Phase One in the amount of seventy-two hundred dollars.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Co- Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to eleven E Edward, two sixty South Parker, replacement of handicap ramp and sidewalk bids.
Well, this is for the sidewalk that goes along the front entry and the back entry for two sixty South Parker. We received two bids, one from Conan and one from Moore. Uh, the recommendation is to go with Conan as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of, uh, seventy-nine hundred and fifty dollars.
I have a question.
Nobody locally bid?
Conan's local.
Oh, Conan is local.
So is Moore, Casco.
I thought he was out on Wadham. All right, go ahead, sorry.
Um, have we, cause I know Conan had our, uh, sidewalk contract before. Have we had anybody, you know, check and see how those sidewalks are holding up or anything?
Um, I know Mike is on the line. I don't know if he has any information and would be, would be able to address that right now.
I'm here. Uh, yes, the sidewalks are still holding up and still look good.
Okay, and what about our customer service with him? Or something?
Yes, we did have some complaints about, uh, not getting receipts from him so they can get their reimbursement back from the city for the third amount of cement. And that's about it.
Anyone else, questions?
Mike, is this the whole sidewalk or just the back corner?
This would be the handicap ramp in front of the, the door there and then the east lead door by the parking lot. We have to raise that concrete up, uh, two inches to meet the handicap requirements. That's all these two are doing. That's all this is doing.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I need a motion for, um, Conan Cement for seventy-nine fifty.
I'll make a motion that we approve Conan Cement for the sidewalk repairs at two sixty South Parker in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Support, Brian Ross.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
No.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to eleven F Frank, two sixty South Parker Parking Lot Bid. Moving on to eleven F Frank. Two sixty South Parker Parking Lot Bids.
So, these are the bids to redo the parking lot at two sixty South Parker. We split this up into really two phases. So, the, the front part of the parking lot and the back part of the parking lot. And then also asked for a combined, uh, quote for these. Uh, we received two bids, one from Hess and one from Jelsh. Jelsh is the, uh, lowest bidder. Uh, and the amount is ninety thousand eight hundred and forty. That's the recommendation. Uh, one item of note is for the next item that we're gonna be discussing, the Mariner Park Waterfront Accessibility Project. Uh, Jelsh has offered that if we select both of these, he would be willing to reduce the cost for the paving for the Mariner Park for another two thousand dollars.
That's pretty good that he re, he's actually doing like a package deal. Anybody have any questions? Yeah, I guess my only question is, is Commissioner Hendrick, um, I know Jelsh Paving did the, uh, uh, West Boulevard over here that didn't hold up too long. So, what was the issue there, Mike?
Uh, West Boulevard's holding up well. The issue is by the driveway that when they installed their driveway, they installed it too high. So, we came through, we milled, we only milled the road and put the two and a half inches asphalt in there. And the driveway was too high, and that's why that water pooled there. That's the only problem we have there.
I know, but that stuff cracked before six months' time.
We did not crack. We did our center, uh, center line where the, uh, the two, when they do the patches, they leave a center line. We cracked that, we cracked seal the center line only.
Well, there was some going the other way across on the other side. And over on Bell River around the corner, there's a lot of big cracks in that already too. Uh, I haven't had a chance to go down and look at Bell River, but that's my only concern. I mean, I, I know it's a good price and I know they wanna do two. I just wanna make sure that we don't have any issues with this parking lot, that's all.
No, by the way we're designing it, we should not have any issues.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? So, um, uh, am I gonna do both or just one at a time, Elaine?
So, I think the motion for this would be to approve Jelsh for the entire project in the amount of ninety thousand eight hundred and forty.
Nine zero eight forty?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I need a motion.
This is Jake, so move.
Roll call.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And, um, we have, uh, announcements for board vacancies.
Uh, no, we still have-
Nope.
Mar- Mariner Park Sidewalk Bid.
Oh. Did I, I did, I, I think I just skipped that. Hang on one second. I thought it was a whole thing.
Well, I, I talked about it during the other one. So-
I thought we just did, I thought we did a motion to do both.
Both phases for, uh, the parking. So, phase one and two together. So, this is a, a separate project that I had mentioned that, um, if we go with Jelsh, he is willing to drop his bid down another two thousand if we went with him for the parking lot replacement at two sixty. So, this is for the, um, paving improvements over at Mariner Park in conjunction with the projects that we're doing for the improvements that we got for the grant from the Christopher Reeve Foundation. So, looking for a, a bid to approve the Jelsh paving in the amount of twelve thousand six eighty-five.
Oh, I see. So, he lowered it, yeah, to, to grand. So, yeah, twelve thousand six eighty-five. Okay, got it. Okay. Discussions, questions, comments?
I, I would just like to thank Mike for contacting him. I think that was, uh, very good forward thinking to see if we would be able to get any type of discounts if we were to choose the two projects for one company.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Any other questions, comments? Um, I got a couple concerns, not necessarily with the company. So, how are we handling this part since it's been low? There's been a lot of water. I know the water's gone down, but then during the ice, uh, jam there, that was severely impeded by the ice coming over. How is this gonna affect this? Are we gonna be raising that up a lot before we put it in?
Um, Mike can correct me if I'm wrong, but we are gonna be bringing in more dirt. They did some, uh, seawall cap work there. And then hopefully later this year, we're gonna be able to install some pilings that are gonna help to blockade some more of that ice.
Okay.
Say it all.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Okay, I need a motion.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve Jelsh paving for the Mariner Park project for the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Support, Bill Claussen.
So, we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, uh, we have some announcements for some board vacancies. Um, applications and letters are due to the city clerk by Monday, May twenty-fourth. If anyone out there is interested in planning commissions, planning commission, we have one vacancy. TIPA, three. Board of Review, one. Historical Commission, one vacancy. Library Board, two. And Community and Economic Development Board, one vacancy. Moving on to City Manager's Report, Elaine.
Uh, not much to report tonight. Just giving a little bit of an update on two sixty South Parker. Uh, the paint and sealing, or I should say, the painting should hopefully be done next week. And then they'll work on putting the sealing tiles in. Uh, they should hopefully have the tiles that's been ordered in by the end of the month and be able to start working on that. And then really what they have left is a lot of the finishing touches, things like the, the counters, the doors and the face plates, things like that. Uh, it looks like TSC is planning on opening Saturday, so everybody go out and support our new business there. Uh, the kayak launch, we're gonna have something on our next agenda for the kayak launch. The estimate that we had for the purchase of it is a little bit more than what the grant is going to be able to cover. So, we'll have that for, uh, the commission to approve at the next meeting. I also wanted to talk about, uh, planning on trying to make things a little bit easier for our staffing in the office because we're pretty much always on top of each other with all of these meetings. And we're coming out of a meeting and come Monday, we're already preparing for the next meeting. So, I'd like to try and, uh, go with just one meeting a month throughout the summer months and see how that goes. I don't know if it's something that's gonna be possible, but what we would be looking to do is just canceling the first meetings of the month because obviously we have the Fourth of July in there. So, we would kind of go in unison with that. So, just anticipate that we may have some cancellations for those first meetings of the month. Um, we will have our next meeting in person is what the plan is, so that will be May twentieth. So, hopefully we will, uh, barring any other crazy incidents or anything that's happening over in India coming this way, I think we're ready to move forward with meeting in person.
That's a good thing.
Thank you.
All happy-
Yeah. I think it's a great time to start, uh, to, to see about the, um, monthly meetings in the summer. Even if we kind of just did it for the summer, if there was more on the agenda, um, for the winter months. But I think that that's a great, uh, kind of experiment. Um, any questions for the city manager?
If I try to add things at the last minute, uh, for just having one meeting. And, uh, I have spoken with department heads to see if it's feasible. And, and they all believe that it is something that will make things a lot easier for them. And hopefully it'll free us up to be able to do some of the other important things that we need to be able to do.
Yeah, 'cause you do, honestly, you really do sound a lot of times prepping for meetings. Um, anybody have any questions for the city manager? Y- yes, I do. Um, what's the status of the siding on the building?
So, the, the siding is in the building, so he's got it there. What my understanding is, is he's waiting for the sidewalk to be taken care of so that we don't potentially, um, ruin the siding when we're tearing up and cutting out and putting in the new sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, but three sides don't, aren't affected by the sidewalk, aren't they?
Agreed, but I'm, I'm not a sider. It's not something that, uh, we're terribly pressed for time. I know that it's not a great idea to have that material exposed for too long, but fortunately, we've had good weather.
Um, I did run into, uh, Paul Dingeman, and he does have all the stuff in already for everything for the meeting room. So, he's gonna be bringing that at some point.
Great. Um, I do have a couple other things that we'll be bringing before the board for the new building. Uh, one of those is chairs, so I've kind of worked with the Subcommittee on trying to find a chair that's gonna work. Uh, also, we've kind of been looking at blinds. We have a quote for just some standard, just regular roll blinds from Endis Interior. Um, I think that that was about three thousand dollars. It's something where we don't really have a lot of, um, ability to like, open like a, a slatted blind or something like that where you can have partial light. It's really just something you pull down and pull up. Um, I think I really need to get a little bit more, uh, options for us to take a look at. And we're just going with plain white blinds at this point.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to, uh, commi- Commissioner Privilege. Um, Jacob Bryson.
I have nothing, thank you.
Elizabeth Hendricks.
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Callahan.
Nothing for me.
Bill Claussen?
Yeah, we got, uh, the planning commission's gonna have their first meeting, uh, in a long time. And, uh, so the planning commission's gonna meet on Monday. I'm, I'll be up in Bay City, but I probably leave so I can get down here, me, have the meeting, and I have to go back up to Bay City. Night, uh, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, uh, for my seminar. Also, uh, this weekend, uh, the Tractor Supply is opening. Everybody go and enjoy it and see it. Also, the Marine City Rotary Club is doing their annual Mother's Day Flower Sale at the church there, uh, next to the library. And on Saturday, it'll be nine to six, and on Sunday, it'll be twelve to three. That's it.
Thank you. John Kreidler?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Brian Ross?
I got my second COVID shot today at five PM, so I should be all ready for next week's, uh, or next, uh, Times Meeting in two weeks. And again, the St. Clair County Health Department did a great job there, so thanks to them. That's all.
Thank you. I wanna talk about, uh, quickly, the, um, splash cash raffle that the Chamber of Commerce and the Community Economic Development Board is having. Um, it's a great fundraiser to, um, to benefit those two, um, uh, the Chamber and the, and the CEBD Board for projects for Marine City. Um, so the splash cash raffle is like this. We're only selling three hundred tickets. Um, first prize is ten thousand dollars, and then we're giving away five one thousand dollar prizes. Uh, tickets are one hundred dollars, and like I said, we're only selling three hundred. So, um, you can buy tickets at the Chamber Office, at the Mariner, at the Sweet Tooth. Um, Wendy, are you selling tickets at the La- Lazy Lama?
Yes, we have them.
And then, uh, the Little Bar, um, and I will tell you, even though it's a hefty ticket price, but, you know, your chances of winning ten thousand dollars, one in three hundred is pretty good, I'm selling them like crazy. So, um, I also wanted to talk about the flower sale that Bill just talked about, May twenty-first and twenty-second. And then, um, if any, uh, we have a lot of college kids coming home and high school kids, uh, getting done with school. Uh, there are plenty of jobs in Marine City for these, uh, young people. I highly recommend, uh, going to any restaurant. Um, and just about everybody that I know is hiring. I mean, if you can't find a job now, um, you're not looking at all. Um, and I also wanted to say, Happy Mother's Day to everybody. It's coming up on Sunday. Um, and that's it. I need a, uh, motion to adjourn.
Bill Claussen, motion to adjourn.
Support, Brian Ross.
We have, we have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.